Call in the regular meeting then order at 7:04 PM. Start with the pledge of allegiance.
I probably told you that in the United States of America, individual officers and the nation under that individual assault, they were leading without self-harm.
Please do the roll call.
Alden Carr.
Aye.
Alden Roll.
Aye.
Alden Johnson.
Aye.
Alden Matoya.
Aye.
Alden Rita. Alden Fairwell.
Aye.
Alden Nagy.
Two with the form. Moving on to number four, presentation of your own seating in the room for two thirty minutes from May sixteenth, committee that all in the city council of May twenty eighth, citizens. Is there a motion? Alden Fairwell and second, Alden Carr. But please do the roll call.
Alden Carr.
Aye.
Alden Roll.
Aye.
Alden Johnson.
Aye.
Alden Matoya.
Aye.
Alden Fairwell.
Aye.
Aye, aye, sir.
There is. Any public comments? Any public comments? Public comment?
I'm waiting for it, Sean.
Oh, that's right. Thank you. Before the public comment, thank you, Alden. I haven't done it in a while. Just to inform the members of the public, public comment is just that, public comment. You're making comments about items relating to today's agenda. It's not a discussion or debate. If you have questions for individual aldermen or elected officials, you can ask that meeting or contact them outside the meeting. It's just a public comment setting. So, anybody ready for public comment?
Yes, sir.
All right. Good evening, Mayor, and also to our council people. Just wanted to say thank you so very much for encouraging us to come out, to share with you what we're doing in our organization. I'm really appreciative of that. I'm representing Mission Pembina Church. And for our month of June, we're having a men's day celebration on Sunday, next June sixteenth, at our ten thirty service at church, and right after, we're having dinner. So, we welcome you to come to service and also have a meal with us. On June twenty-third, we're having a motorcycle blessing and parade, and we'll also be providing donuts and coffee. So, we're definitely looking forward to participation there. And you don't have to call up there next, you make it a appointment, just come on out. And then, June thirtieth, we're having our friends and family day service, and we're serving life refreshment. So, you're welcome to come, bring family members, and support us as we will be supporting you, and we're gonna be there for that July fourth parade. Thank you so much.
I'm Nina. You tell me what time is the motorcycle blessing?
That's gonna be at ten thirty. Ten thirty, that's gonna be our service time, right outside. Everything will be outside the church.
It may be like eleven o'clock, right after the service?
Let's say ten thirty-ish, and I can get that to you with the exact time. Okay? All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other public comment?
Good evening, everybody. My name is Tom Shepherd. I'm one of the organizers of the Blessing of the Waters, an annual event that we host at the waterfall over on, somebody has to help me. Fulton and Chatham Streets, on the river, of course. This year, it will be held on Sunday, June twenty-third, at three PM. This is to commemorate and to honor the importance of water and to tell people about the wonderful facility that you have there as well, the nice waterfall that we have there in the grounds that the city takes care of. Everybody is invited. There's no cost. It's about a one-hour ceremony that we do there, officiated by Reverend Mary Beth Inger. And everybody's invited, including the aldermen and the audience. Blessing of the Waters on the twenty-third of June at three PM at the waterfall. And thank you for your support each year.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Good evening, everyone. Allen Stevo. How we doing this evening? Looking back at this administration, I sit and I smile. We have directors now, and we're not a directive form of government. We're an automatic form of government. You're given more and more of your elective responsibility away. Just like to remind you of that. And the voters voted for aldermen, mayor, they don't vote for administrators. They wanna meet with you. They want you to decide what's going on, not administrators. And why do we need two of them? And how much are they costing taxpayers? You're given more and more of your authority away, and that's not fair to voters. The new improvements in the streets and alleys is greatly appreciated. Why wasn't done ten years ago? Where did the money come from? We'd like to know where the money came from. What is the name of the person who bought the anchor building out of property? And how much? How much did he pay for it? When John Rita asked over twenty years ago for us to go out and vote for Bobby, he didn't tell us that in twenty years from now, he was gonna preside over the closing of the hospital. He didn't tell us that. He told us he was gonna be a great state representative. The city hired a company in Chicago, I believe, to work out the deal with the hospital. And what they came up with was something like all the city, all their hospital property, plus five million dollars, but the city alderman did not act on it. Why didn't you act on it? Plus, you're gonna get five million dollars. Why didn't you act on it? What do they call that, counselor? Malfeasance? Misfeasance? Or is it non-feasance? Who got the five million dollars? Somebody got it. There's no accounts payable or no payroll on the website, current. Hasn't been on there since the last election. We'd like to have it on the website. It's only fair. Now, Mr. Patazka has a bundle of receipts. We should be able to view them before they're rolled about. Where the money went, that's the proper way to do it. Let's see where our tax dollars are being spent. We have that right. See, it's our money. It's not your money. It's our money. Where are the load with the sides on the new streets and alleys? As far as the hospital goes, Governor Christopher Thayer, less than so does State Rep. Bobby Rehm.
You have any other public comment? Not moving on. Under E, we made a motion to approve payroll from June seventh, twenty twenty-four, and mile four ninety-seven, nine-two, four, and fifty-four cents. Is there a motion? Alden Roll, second. Alden Carr on the question. Please do the roll call.
Alden Carr.
Aye.
Alden Roll.
Aye.
Alden Johnson.
Aye.
Alden Matoya.
Aye.
Alden Fairwell.
Aye.
Aye, aye, sir.
There is.
Did I just, did we also vote on the city council minutes? We had a vote on the, I have two sets of minutes. Did you like them at the same time? Oh, wait, okay, fine.
Start a question.
No, no, I was sorry. I wasn't sure. Thank you.
Repeat, we have a motion for approval of accounts payable dated June twelfth, twenty twenty-four, for one million, fifty-one thousand, one sixty-two, and ninety-two cents. Is there a motion? Alden Matoya, second. Alden Fairwell on the question. Please do the roll call.
Alden Carr.
Aye.
Alden Roll.
Aye.
Alden Johnson.
Aye.
Alden Matoya.
Aye.
Alden Fairwell.
Aye.
Aye.
Repeat, we have a motion to approve the bid, sale of city-owned property, thirty-one, twenty-seven, hundred forty-first place, to rent-rent builders. Is there a motion? Alden Roll, second. Alden on the question. Alden Johnson.
Yes, what was the bid amount?
Bid amount for that property was eleven thousand dollars.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Please do the roll call.
Alden Carr.
Aye.
Alden Roll.
Aye.
Alden Johnson.
Aye.
Alden Matoya.
Aye.
Alden Fairwell.
Aye.
Aye, aye, sir.
There is under E, resolution to the City of Blount, Illinois, authorizing approving proposal for Alliant Insurance Services Incorporated Mobile Vehicle Insurance from AGS Marine Insurance from Rio Grande, Southern Florida. Alden Johnson, second. Alden Johnson, second. Alden Fairwell, on the question. Alden Johnson.
Same course, little property on the home.
Twelve thousand for this one.
Questions? Please do the roll call.
Alden Carr.
Aye.
Alden Roll.
Aye.
Alden Johnson.
Aye.
Alden Matoya.
Aye.
Alden Fairwell.
Aye.
Aye, aye, sir.
There is under E, resolution to the City of Blount, Illinois, authorizing approving proposal for Alliant Insurance Services Incorporated Mobile Vehicle Insurance from AGS Marine Insurance from Rio Grande, Southern Florida. Alden Johnson, second. Alden Johnson, second. Alden Fairwell, on the question. Please do the roll call.
Alden Carr.
Aye.
Alden Roll.
Aye.
Alden Johnson.
Aye.
Alden Matoya.
Aye.
Alden Fairwell.
Aye.
Aye, aye, sir.
There is. Have any detailed mayor's reports tonight, other than, our season's been going great. We've had some water leaks. Thank you to Public Works for addressing those really quickly. Last few have happened right at the worst time possible on Sunday and weekends. We're maintaining our system. We're afraid proof that gets in there and builds no disruption to our residents. If you see any water on the streets, like we've noticed, a few aldermen noticed some things over the weekend, please report it right away. Mike always answers the phone and not Phil Brett or myself. We get a crew out there as fast as possible. So, again, thank you, Public Works. Side note, also, we got some money. I unfortunately couldn't attend, but Mike did in our place. The City of Blount got a grant, one hundred and three thousand dollars for tree maintenance. I believe, was it four hundred and some trees we trimmed? Spray for the city. Only twenty-two communities got the grant, over a hundred applied. So, again, thank you to Mike, our forestry board, Val Kehoe, and Travis with our energy area to put it all together, and definitely gonna put that to use very quickly. That's a minor report right now, so you can.
The annual blessing, I'm gonna reiterate, annual blessing of the water is Sunday, June twenty-third, at three o'clock. The Love Family Wellness Center has their grand opening June twenty-seventh, between ten and two. Junior Golf has begun, and you can still sign up on Tuesdays. The Lunch Bus, it's free meals for person, Joe, Louder Church, between ten forty and eleven, ten AM, Monday through Friday. Motorcycle Blessing at the Michigan Comfort Church, June twenty-third at ten thirty. TGIF will begin this Friday. We have eight vendors, we have music, we have food vendor, and we have a new produce, it's Produce Brothers. You might have seen him on social media. They'll be the new farmer. June twenty-ninth, we have Lou's Barbecue at the John D. Reader Rec. Center. Bring your chairs, tents, and grills. Everyone is welcome. And we have a Fourth of July parade coming. We're still taking applications. We have over fifty entries as of today, and we still encourage everyone to sign up.
Thank you. Under city treasury, a motion to approve the May twenty twenty-four tragedy report. Is there a motion? Alden Roll, second. Alden Carr on the question. Please do the roll call.
Alden Carr.
Aye.
Alden Roll.
Aye.
Alden Johnson.
Aye.
Alden Matoya.
Aye.
And Alden Fairwell.
Aye.
Aye, aye, sir.
There is the attorney, there's no executive, correct?
Correct.
Anything else?
Yeah.
Thank you. City administration?
Just do quick items. City stickers are on sale now, so we have pretty smooth operations so far. To do as best we can, encourage your residents to get city stickers. Anyone doesn't have it by the end of this month, it's gonna start getting tickets, and we have our CSOs and a little more staffed up now, so tickets aren't going to be a real thing. And on the regulation side of things, we did our second round of red tags over the past week. Some of those are previous red tags that came in, got plans, and then defaulted. And long story short, as we go through this process of red tagging comes to an end, we're gonna inevitably have some shut-offs. That is something that some people hear about in your ward when it happens. When they do get shut off, that happens for a reason. Direct them towards the administration, so we can sit them down and work with them to get back on a good plan. I think that's all I have. Most of the questions from here.
I just want the question. CSOs, are they point four seven or are they?
No, they're sixteen. They're eight AM.
If you have overnight concerns, then let's talk about it. We'll talk about it with you, if there's specific areas that we do have patrol overnight. So, the specific areas where we're having problems between six PM and six AM, then we can still address those with the radio patrol.
Thank you. Aldermanic Analysis Street Works cabinets. Alden Johnson.
Yes, thank you, chief. I want to thank Public Works for getting debris off of the thirty ninth street bridge. It needs, like, some mattresses off, I believe. We need to slightly throw some mattresses off, definitely. Drew off the fields. And then I wanted to try to talk to the forestry board, I didn't know how to approach it. They had built a new trucking company in opposing and I was trying to work with the mayor over there about, he's putting those inserts and fences because the trucks are packed towards the homes that's on California and sometimes they leave idling overnight, so that's another issue. And because of the residents there, they would like to put up some kind of trees for, you know, some kind of landscape or curb appeal.
What should we meet Tuesday?
Tuesday, what time?
7:00, library.
And last was, chief, I wanted to talk about code enforcement or curfew enforcement with the sirens and actually regular patrol to make sure that people, not just children, are not just hanging out.
We talked to fire chief afterwards and we had this conversation years ago, so. Any other comments, questions? Alderman? Not, made a motion to adjourn? Alderman Rolls, second Alderman Fairwell, I dare to say aye.
Aye.